Good evening, welcome to the Fall River City of Fall River's Planning Board Meeting pursuant to the open meeting laws. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the medium, the meeting to any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The City Charter Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such policy which in short provides for citizen input on planning board matters, on planning board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There is a sign up sheet that is located at the back of the room if anyone is interested in signing up for the public comments. Good evening, today is October 9th, 2024, about 5:30 PM. Present, my name is Gloria Pacheco. I'll be acting as chair this evening since the chair is not present tonight. Also present is Beth Andre, Maria Luciolo, and Mike Farias, as well as those are the members of the planning board. John Farah is absent this evening. Nina Kruger is also present. Dan Aguirre, planning engineer, city planning engineer. And Gary Lee is here from FM, from Fall River Television. Okay, so first item on the agenda, Form A, Application for Endorsement of Plan Believe Not to Require Approval, File Number 24-1593. Owner applicant Scotty Viveras. Property location 15 Anderson Street, Assessor's Map D06, Lot 16. Ms. Aguirre?
So, the A&R plan that you have to fill out is located, again, on three streets, Endotac, Anderson, and Dupus, frontage along the property. The applicant had appeared before the zoning board of appeals and with granted relief allowing them to subdivide this piece, cutting out the existing home, leaving it on one parcel, the 12,000 square feet, and they're cutting off parcel two. The variance decision recording is added to the plan in the top right-hand corner under general notes, and the plan has been prepared in accordance with that grant of relief and the frontage and area requirements that were required with such. So, with that, I would offer that the plan is eligible for endorsement under an A&R.
Members of the board, any comment?
I reviewed it and it looks like it implies, so I'm okay with endorsing it.
Anyone present in favor of this, of this A&R plan? Anyone present opposed to this plan? Do we have a motion from the board?
A motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Beth seconds. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Second item on the agenda, Form A, Application for Endorsement of Plan Believe Not to Require Approval, File Number 24-1594. Owner applicant Maria Kirkman. Property location 608 Herman Street, Assessor's Map View 10, Lot 230.
So, this is a property that's located at, excuse me, 608 Herman Street. It's a true lot, which also had frontage along Corvet Street. They appeared before the zoning board of appeals, were granted relief with regards to the rear yard setback of the dwelling at 608, down to 20 feet, where 25 feet was required. The remaining requirements for frontage and area of 100 feet of frontage and 12,000 square feet of area met with both of the lots. That being said, the recording information for the granted relief is in the general notes section of the plan, and the subdivision has been prepared in accordance with that decision. With that, I would recommend endorsement.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I just have one question, Dan. On this one, the second lot, Lot 9, we've got the 12,000 square feet, but the setbacks, it would be a really thin building. Are they proposing to put a building there, or?
Yes, they are building a building on that, and I believe they've already started site plan reviewing. It is tucked over in that left-hand corner, a rather small house. 608 is a very large house.
Yeah.
So, when you look at the setbacks here, it's a 25-foot front, 25-foot rear, and that leaves approximately, you know, a 25-foot window to the very far west.
Yep.
Again, if they needed any type of relief, they would need to go back to the zoning board of appeals, but as it stands now, they've met the requirements for subdivision.
Okay, so the subdivision's there, and then if they do need to have the setback requirements, they'll go in front of the zoning for that one.
Yep. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Let me ask your questions to approve.
Oh, hold on. Any of here present tonight in favor of this A&R plan? Yes, do you want to come up? I'm sorry?
It's my property.
You want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Marie Kirkman.
Okay, and your address, Marie?
What is it?
Your address?
608 Herman Street.
Okay, so just, that's all you have to say, that you're here in support of it? Thank you. Anyone present opposed to this A&R plan? No? Okay, Mario, do you want to complete? I'm sorry, I cut you off. Do you want to file your motion? Sorry.
What I hear.
Do you want to?
Make motion to approve.
Thank you, Mario. Sorry about that. Any second?
I second.
Okay, Beth seconds. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Kirkman. Item number three, Form A, Application for Endorsement of Plan Believe Not to Require Approval, File Number 24-1594. Owner applicant True Brother, Inc. Property location 889 and 895 Grinnell Street, Assessor's Map S04, Lots 1 and 2.
So, this location on Grinnell Street, this is the dead-end portion of Grinnell Street directly west of the Walmart Plaza, that comes off of Great Avenue and off of Jefferson Street. This is actually a plan where they're just removing an internal lot line. This was previously two separate parcels. They were multifamily homes built on each. Those two homes were demolished as part of the approval for moving forward with a new building construction. However, can't build a building over a lot line, so this is formally removing that interior lot line, merging the lots as well. That is all. With that, I would offer that the plan is afforded and endorsed.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
No, this is pretty straightforward.
Okay, anyone present here tonight in favor of this A&R plan? Do you want to?
I'm sorry, what was your name? Proceeding, Jay Gritzoff.
And you're here in favor of this?
No.
Okay, and do you live, do you reside here, or do you reside elsewhere?
He's building the new building.
Don't need his address for the record, or no? Okay. Anyone here opposed to this A&R plan? Okay, do you have a motion?
I'm motioned to approve.
Beth motions, do I have a second?
I second it.
Mike seconds. Mario, roll call?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay. Item number four on the agenda, Proposed Zoning Map Amendment. We're going to discuss and make recommendations to the Fall River City Council regarding the expansion of the Housing Development Zone HD1 Overlay District as follows. Do I have to read the entire little section?
I don't think, I don't think you do, but.
All right. Okay, we have in front of us a letter written by Honorable Mayor Paul E. Coogan to Joseph Camara, the President of the City Council, regarding this proposed second amendment to the housing development zone titled the Fall River Waterfront Downtown Market Rate Incentive Zoning Plan, wherein he also requests that the planning board members review the proposed amendment to, to the zoning plan. Any comments?
So, what this generally is, is we have an existing housing development overlay district. We have many of them through the city, very large, and at various times, we've come before, well, the city has come before the planning board with the process of expanding them to include specific locations where we have mill projects or other larger housing development projects that could be afforded different state funding if they met certain requirements. So, but one of the first things they need to do is fall in an HD zone. So, you'll see on the map that was attached, I think you all have it in your package, the outlined area in dark blue, and I can show you on this one, show one as well. So, this is the southerland of the HD1 area, which falls along East Main Street, South Main Street, and this would be Cook Pond down in this location here. So, the amendment before you now, this is all HD1, which you see shaded in this darker blue color. It's about 70 acres that we would be tacking on to meet contiguous with the existing HD1 district that's there. That would be, I know we had done one last year along Grove Mills Avenue to extend that one, so this is very similar. So, this recommendation would go back to the, to the city council, and then they would take the ultimate vote on changing the zoning map.
Port members, any comments?
Yeah, just one question. I believe McGovern's Restaurant is in that, if I'm not mistaken?
I believe they do fall, I think we extended it that far, yes, all along, all the way down to the state line, which would be state ad. So, anything between South Main Street and Cook Pond would now be afforded that right.
Okay.
I know there's a, there's a large mill complex here that's under development as well now, and a couple of other locations. We do have a letter from the Bristol County Economic Development Consultants.
I saw that.
That you can either read in, or if Ken, if you would just like to summarize your letter, that's up to you. We can just read it as is, if you would.
Yeah, we do have a letter, but Ken, are you here in favor?
Yes, sir.
Want to step forward? Thank you.
For the record, my name is Ken Fiola. I'm the Executive Vice President of Bristol County EVC. I'd like to thank the, the planning board for the opportunity to comment on this proposed addition to the HDIP zone. I believe before you, you have a letter that it was submitted earlier today, so I will not read it in its entirety, but essentially just to summarize the rationale behind the expansion of the HD zone is to create more housing in the city. As you can see on the map that Mr. Aguirre just displayed to the board, this HD zone would primarily be extended to encompass the perimeter of Cook Pond and some other areas adjacent to that area, mainly along, along State Road. The purpose would be to try to reposition some of the existing mills within that area for housing purposes. In the HDIP program, essentially the way it works is that if a developer is in a, would like to repurpose a mill, they typically would go after three forms of funding to help offset some of the costs associated with the rehab of those mills. Three sources primarily would consist of federal and state tax credits, along with an HDIP tax credit to help offset some of the development costs themselves. Once you combine those three tax credits collectively, it makes it much more cost-efficient for the rehab of the property. By law, in order to take advantage of the HDIP tax credit, you have to be within an HDIP zone, so that's what the approval, the approval that's being sought tonight. It has to be approved by both the planning board and the city council, and then ultimately it has to be approved by the state. Once you receive all three of those approvals, the area is properly zoned, there's an overlay which doesn't negatively impact some of the existing uses within that area, but in the event that some of those uses would like to be utilized for residential purposes, the overlay district, the HDIP overlay at least gets your foot in the door for consideration, and it may still need variance in other sorts of approval by the city, but at least housing may be as of right dependent on other approvals. But equally as important to that is then, if you develop the properties for residential use, 80% of the development has to be market rate, and 20% could be non-market rate units, so that's typically up to the developer themselves. Right now, as we all know, Fall River is suffering from a housing supply in the sense that there's not enough housing for, for residents, and now what this does is it creates additional housing within the city of Fall River for Fall River residents and others that may be looking to move into the city. And just if you adhere to the basic economic principle of supply and demand, the more supply you create, it's going to result in lower rentals throughout the city itself. Right now, you have less than 2% vacancy in the city for residential rental use, so we need to create more units in order to drive some of those rents down, and this is a tool in which to facilitate the expansion of residential market rate and potentially non-market rate housing within the southern section of the city itself. As Mr. Aguirre has indicated, there are other HDIP zones in the city, and as my letter points out, the HDIP program has been responsible for the development of more than 300 units throughout the city and private investment of over $70 million. So, both in terms of creating additional housing opportunities for residents, as well as creating job opportunities for contractors and tradesmen and everything else, that $70 million investment has gone a long way to facilitate job creation in these projects themselves. So, having said all that, obviously I'm here in favor of it, and I'm hoping that the board will agree to move this forward in a form of approval so it can be further discussed and approved by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Fiola. Any comments from the board? Questions? Any comments, questions?
It is advantageous to have these. We work with a lot of different cities, and you are at least in the queue and have this, and you're that much ahead of the city that doesn't have it.
Yeah, it's only, it's a program that's only available to gateway cities, and actually, you know, we, City of Fall River led a legislative initiative to reauthorize HDIP funding for the program itself. In the past, the funding used to consist of just $10 million a year dispersed amongst gateway cities statewide. Now, the program has been up to $30 million a year. So, there's more money associated with the program, which means there's more opportunities for the creation of housing in these gateway cities.
And it's important to understand that the, this is an overlay district. The underlying zoning districts, as Ken alluded to, do not change. So, the existing uses or proposed uses in accordance with the existing bylaw do not get changed at all. This is just, this creates an opportunity area for developers that want to fall underneath this category.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Any members present this evening in favor of this zoning overlay district? Anyone present opposed? No? Do you have a motion from the board?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mike seconds. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Agenda item, agenda item number five, receipt of correspondence from the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program. Okay.
So, this is just a matter that we would normally just place on file. It gets sent to all of the different agencies. This had to deal with the existing transmission lines that traverse the Taunton River?
Yeah.
And they go through that process and dealing with the Chapter 91 license with Mass DEP.
Okay, do I have a motion to place the correspondence on file?
Yes.
Thanks, Beth. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mike seconds. Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you. Item number six on the agenda, Discussion of the Existing A2 Apartment and M Multifamily Zoning Districts and the Potential Need for Zoning Ordinance Revisions.
So, let me finish highlighting these for you, even though I'm going to pass them off. So, two months ago, well, actually probably 15 to 20 years in the making, the zoning board of appeals has been dealing with an A2 zoning district, which is an apartment zoning district for units, six units or more, generally for, for this type of development. And what, what we see is the requirements for that district being 100 feet of frontage and 10,000 square feet minimum for one unit, and then 2,000 square feet for each additional unit. The zoning board of appeals is bombarded with applications and petitions that have to deal with this zoning district, because when we look around the city and we look at the sizes of the parcels available, especially in this A2 zoning district, which is mostly in the inner-city portion of the city, there aren't hardly any parcels that meet this zoning requirement. And when we look at the other types of zoning districts that allow multifamily housing, like an M district, or a BL district, or a G general district, they all have a different method of calculating a minimum lot size. So, when we had discussed this with the zoning board of appeals, they had voted on making a recommendation to the mayor, asking him to request the city council to begin the process of revising the A2 zoning district to be similar as the others with a 5,000-square-foot minimum and 1,500 square feet per additional unit, and the same, you know, frontage and setbacks as, as those districts as well. One, to eliminate the need for contiguous or continuous zoning board of appeals applications, and it would also allow for, again, the increase in housing in areas of the city that they are most needed. You know, most of these A2 districts are in areas where we have a number of three tenement, six tenement, eight tenement, 10 tenement buildings, all on parcels that don't even come close to meeting this zoning requirement. You don't see often that the zoning board of appeals denies it, because there is such a, such an easy argument with regards to lot shape and factor and all of the abutting properties and harmonious with the neighborhood. So, what we're asking tonight is that the, the planning board make a similar recommendation in sending a letter to the mayor's office to look at that process and start that with the city council. Now, this, this does come back to you at the point of public hearing. Normally, we would have just gone to the mayor, the mayor would have went to the city council and then started that process. I thought it was a little bit more appropriate to have the zoning board of appeals and the planning board, who are the agencies that deal with this the most, give the mayor a recommendation ahead of time, so that it's not his, necessarily his idea or his thinking, it's been vetted and looked at by the zoning board of appeals who deals with this the most, and then the planning board as well. So, that's all we're asking tonight, is that you vote one way or another with the recommendation of that area change and frontage and setback requirements to be in accordance with the other types of multifamily zoning districts that we have throughout the city.
Thanks, Ms. Aguirre. I happen to agree. I've felt like this way for years, that this, this criteria was just impossible, and like you said, none of the, none of the multifamilies conform. Now, you're still advocating to keep A2 and M, but just to modify the requirement.
Yeah, so, so the way that it's written in the, in the agenda, it was, it's basically to, to make the A2 mimic the M, with the exception of the cap on units. So, the M maxes out at six units. So, we would have all of the same area requirements, frontage and setback requirements of the M, but we would not be capped at the six units, because there, you may have the opportunity to buy additional parcels and to be able to combine more in these areas where we want higher-density apartment units.
Great, thank you so much.
One question I have is, there's a substantial, which I agree with the need of this, and it is a city in an urban environment, and most of the properties don't meet these requirements anyway, but the big jump is from a building height from eight, from 45 feet to 70 feet?
Yep.
I'm assuming if you're talking about these six units, you're, are you looking to change the 70 to 45 as well, or how is that?
It would be upward discussion. Do you remember what this, how the zoning board dealt with the height?
I believe that they said to keep the height at 70.
70, okay. Yeah, the only thing that I would say is it might bring contentious to neighbors who, who have 45, 45-foot height homes or dwellings, and then all of a sudden have one that's almost, you know, 35 feet higher. So, I don't know, that would be the only thing that I would bring up in, in that, that would be contentious if I was a neighbor and all of a sudden you had a unit near me that went three stories higher.
So, if we, if we look at it at this way?
Yeah.
There are other zoning districts where the building height is that high, specifically the WTOD zoning district, which is actually higher. So, but either way, one thing we wanted to do, and again, to address that issue, is the lot coverage would remain at 30%. So, it's not like we can have a building that's going to max out to all of the sideyard setbacks, because it would never meet the lot coverage requirements. That may get handled in, in the height. I would not be in, in opposition, again, to changing the height, but in order to get same-sized footprint, where you could get six units, in order to get the additional units, you would need to be higher than the 45. That does not mean that we could not go further with, you know, if it's at 45 feet, we have certain sideyard setbacks, and if we go to the 70, maybe it needs to meet a higher setback. And that could be part of the discussion when, when we actually make this change. But as Gloria alluded to, for many years when we appeared before the zoning board of appeals, it was always Chairman David, Attorney of David Assad's argument always, well, not argument, but when he was sitting as chairman, he would say, "The zoning board of appeals isn't the place to deal with bad zoning. Changing zoning is the way to deal with bad zoning." So, we had always had this on the plate to kind of look at, and what was funny was, at the last zoning board of appeals meeting, so Chairman Assad's been going for two years now, two years, I think, since he retired, so he hadn't been back before the zoning board of appeals since he left. The first three petitions that he had the other night, all in the A2 zoning district, that, that he was requesting relief. So, he, he was able to hop on his same soapbox that he was on before and move forward with that. So, with that being said, you know, if you want to make a recommendation of some sort with regards to building height, we could add that in whatever letter we offer as well. You don't have to give us this letter tonight if you want to think about it, if you want to craft language with what your recommendation would be. It's still going to be, it's still going to come back to you for your true recommendations when it's a public hearing. This, this would just allow the mayor to start the process dealing with, with the lot area itself.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to the setbacks or the minimum frontage at all. It's just, I, I deal with this quite a bit in other cities, Tarrytown, New York, or in New Jersey, and that usually ends up being the, the, the point where we have to go and do photo simulations of height of building?
Yep.
Because all of a sudden you're blocking views of the waterfront or whatever it might be, and the, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying with all of the setbacks and everything else. I just think that it has to be a way to handle the height of the building.
I'm not opposed to making, or again, if you want to make the recommendation to 45 feet to mimic the multifamily residents identically.
Yeah, I, I would, I would do that, and then what I would suggest is that if they wanted to go higher, then they ask for a zoning to that.
And then go.
And then if, because in some cases, you don't have any objections to these. They're happy to see, and they're creating view corridors and all of that, whatever it might be, but then the reality of it is, then you can give them the grace to go and build it higher.
Yeah, because if they came in, if they came in and they wanted to build a 70, 70-foot tall building, but they were going to meet greater building setbacks, then that would be an argument for, for the grant. At least that, we don't see many 70-foot buildings being proposed.
No, yeah, I know you don't, yeah.
Mike, Mike would know more than that than, than anybody about the construction standards of the types of methods to build wood frame buildings and.
Yeah.
So, if, if you would like to make that your recommendation to, to mimic those, I would still leave the lot coverage at 30%, but if you wanted to reduce that 70-foot height, or all the frontage and setbacks to match what the M is?
Yep.
I, I think, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I'm, I think, I would word it, I would approve it with that stipulation that it matches the M except for the height of the building, that the 70 would be proposed at 45, with a variance if needed.
So, if I'm understanding you, this, you know?
Sure.
You're okay with the city reevaluating the A2 and the M district? However, you recommend, I think I agree with you, that you recommend that the A2 district have the maximum height reduced from 70 to 45 feet?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. Any other comments from the members of the board? Anyone here in support of this, this, this agenda item? Anyone here opposed to this agenda item? No? Do I have a motion from the board? And?
I'll explain it. I, I'll, I motion to approve with the variance of the 75-foot maximum height building to be the same as the 45-foot.
For the A2 district?
For the A2 district.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Beth. Roll call.
But you've got to make a, a motion to adopt the area requirements and building setbacks of the M.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, I apologize.
We're going to deal with the big picture.
I, I will restate it. I know exactly what you want me to do now. I, I recommend that the A2 district follow what the M district is for. I, I recommend that the A-two district follow what the M district is for minimum frontage. Yard, uh, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, with the caveat that the seventy-foot height of the current A-two be changed to forty-five foot height of a building. And the same for the maximum lot coverage of, I believe it's twenty-five percent.
We're gonna leave it at thirty.
Yeah, we're gonna leave that at thirty, leave it at thirty percent.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. We had a second, correct? Yep. Uh, roll call, Mario? Do you approve the motion that Mike just put forward? Mario?
Do you have a motion to approve?
Do you, do you support Mike's motion? Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, agenda item number seven, review, discuss and approve the twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting schedule. Board members have any comments?
This is extremely helpful to have this. This will go on my calendar. Thank you. I approve this.
Okay, uh, anyone in, uh, present in support of this agenda item regarding the schedule for next year, twenty-twenty-five? Anyone present opposed? Do you have a motion? Do, do we have to approve this motion? Oh, no. Dane, let me just put it on record.
No, you can, you can, you can, you're actually voting on the schedule, so, yes.
Okay, do you need a motion to?
I motion to approve the schedule.
Thanks, Mike. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mario. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Okay, uh, agenda item number eight, approval of the minutes from the August fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting and the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
So August fourteenth can be approved tonight, but we do not have all three people that were here for the twenty-second.
That's right.
So that one will have to be tabled because um Mario and Mike were absent.
Do I have a motion to approve, to approve the minutes from August fourteen, twenty-twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Beth. Do you have a second?
I second.
Thanks, Mike. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So do you have a motion to table the minutes for August twenty, twenty, August twenty-second meeting?
That has to be Beth, the next motion. Motion, motion to table.
Thanks, Beth. I, uh, also, um, I, yeah, because we care about, I second it, yes. I was on there, okay. Uh, number nine, uh, citizen input, three minutes per citizen. Sir, are you here for some, do you wanna?
Well, I had a, I had a good question.
Great. You wanna state your name and address for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Kurt. I live at one eighteen East Main Street.
Thank you.
When I looked at the map, um, I live across the street from a H-D one overlay district, but didn't realize I did. So my question is, could you explain to me what an H-D one overlay district is?
Yes, so there, so we have regular zoning that's in, in place everywhere through the city. An H-DIP, an H-D overlay district is overlays the existing zoning, that's still the underlying zoning district for all the uses. The state created a program where if you fall in an H-D zoning overlay district, you're eligible for certain types of funding for the development of market rate housing. So when we look at, for instance, oh, the mill project that was constructed on Gold Mills Avenue recently, in the old Ashworth Mill Building, I don't know if you've seen that, but it's, it's usually in one of the, the mill buildings where that developer has the ability to go to the state and seek certain funding mechanisms and tax breaks for the develop, help them to develop market rate housing in a specific location. They're not eligible to apply to that state program unless they fall in one of these zoning districts. So that, that's the purpose of it. So when there are, look, when there are certain properties and buildings that could meet the need for these type of market rate housing developments, they need to fall in one of these H-D overlay districts.
Okay, East Main Street is zoned business. And it's both sides of the street, not just the side that's on there.
So that's, that's the existing one you're, you're speaking of, right? Yes.
Yes, the existing, yes.
So where, where, where do you live? Are you along East Main or?
Yeah, I'm on East Main. I'm on, East Main and Mystic.
Okay, so you're up here.
Right, but I'm, but I'm.
You're on the Mystic side?
I'm on the Mystic side.
Okay, I got it.
So I'm across the street from the overlay.
This is, this is the existing overlay district, correct?
Right, but what I'm, what I'm getting at is, the um, the area across the street from me
Yep.
is still zoned business.
Correct.
Okay, so when it comes time for a developer to wanna do something.
Yep.
Which takes precedent because this thing is saying you wanna build residential. It's predominantly residential across the street from me.
Correct.
And, and some of the old businesses have been turning to apartments.
Correct.
But this is, this is an overlay, so if someone wanted to put, say, combined use, say, they wanted to take the first floor and make it business on all the houses, they could probably do that.
They would need to go to the, they would need to come before the Zoning Board of Appeals. The H-D overlay district only deals with market rate housing.
That's all it does.
That's all it does. So if there was, so these are the types of projects, if there was a, a school, for instance, an abandoned school across the street from you, and it's, it's been sitting vacant for a long time, and we have a developer that wants to come in and put apartments in that school, like Sacred Heart, was I think the most recent one, I think that was done. They could apply to the state to get assistance with funding to renovate that building into, into market rate housing.
All right, so if you have a business that exists.
Yep.
On, in that, on that side of the, of East Main Street.
Correct.
And if someone said, "I wanna turn that into an apartment."
If they owned it?
If they owned it, right.
Yep.
And they wanted to turn it into an apartment because they can't write that out as a business because the parking is atrocious on East Main.
Yep.
So this would make it easier for them to do that if they're on the side where the H-D one is.
Well.
On that side of East Main.
And when you look at what the requirements are for the H-D program, they're fairly intrusive and limiting. So we only get certain types of projects. I, in my past practice, I would never recommend someone in a situation like that because you have to buy into all the limiting factors that they have by that state law. And you have to abide by them all. It's not always the easiest thing. So could they apply for that? I'm, I'm assuming they could apply for some type of uh, in the program like that. But it, it would be much easier for them to probably either just do it by right or by appearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals and changing the, the business use into some type of uh apartment use. But the fact that it's in an H-D overlay district doesn't make that any easier with regards to zoning.
Does it make it easier for someone to say, across the street from me, there's, there's about five houses that used to be owned by one, one owner?
Yep.
And now they're all been split up?
Okay.
If someone said, "I wanna go in there and level all those houses and put in more dense apartments."
On like one singular parcel? Like combine them all back again or?
Yeah, but, but since they were all one parcel at one point, I was hearing what you said earlier. Since they were all on one parcel at one time, I, I think. Because they're all owned by one person, let's put it that way. It would probably be easy for someone to do that, go in there and level all five of them and then put, say, they're all three families.
Yep.
Put in, say, six families, you know, on, 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 uh, multiple ones.
You.
Would this make it easier? Because I'm doing this from the standpoint of a person that lives there.
It would probably, for a, a project of a certain size.
Yeah.
That you wanted to take along all of the baggage that comes with the state's requirements for H-D development, yes, it would make it easier to do.
Okay. But it's only if someone wants to do that. Otherwise, for them to do anything with the existing housing that's there.
Yep.
You're telling me it's not worth it.
No, no.
It's better off to go through the existing.
You're better off just dealing with, with what you've got there and dealing with zoning. Because they, they tell you what you can charge for rents, they, so it's, there's a lot that goes along with that.
Okay.
You have to meet all of their criteria.
All right.
That's why it's usually generally a school building, a mill building, you know, a, a ten million dollar renovation project of a mill, uh, where they need certain type of tax credits and help through that program.
I, no, I understand why they do that.
And you have to apply to the program. It's not, it's not by right.
Oh, it's not by right.
So if they don't feel that your project meets their criteria or creates the significant number of market rate housing, no. Because they, they only have a limited amount of funds, so they wanna utilize those funds for big hit projects that, that create a substantial amount of housing.
Okay. All right, I think I've got the questions I wanted answered.
Okay.
I just didn't understand. I didn't know that was there, to be honest with you, until I saw your map.
Yeah, so, so there are, there are a number of different types of overlay districts. So you have, if you look at the zoning map, it can be confusing. You've got a bunch of different colors, a different zoned areas, whether they're single family, two-family apartments. Then there are overlay districts of different kinds, like the King Philip Mill, for instance. That's in a very specific King Philip Mill overlay district that allowed for the development of that mill and to, to take it down and to build what they built. These H-D zoning districts are, I think there's three of them, um, they're scattered throughout the city. There are also arts overlay district, there are watershed protection districts, overlay districts. So there, there's a whole number of, because you don't always wanna change the underlying use. But sometimes you do wanna put other restrictions or requirements on that property to allow people to do certain things.
Right. Okay, I, I think I got all my questions answered. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat your name and her address one more time?
Sure, Brian, B-R-I-A-N, Kurt, C-U-R-T. And the address is one eighteen East Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else present for citizen input?
I want to, although I'm not a citizen anymore. So in case you guys don't.
Name and address for.
I, I can give my old address from Florida. In case you guys don't know, Nina's leaving us.
Oh, oh.
But it's, you know, for, for, for additional growth, um, different roles. She's been a pleasure to have, you know? For two years, she's been incredible. Would, would take any task, would learn, would study. You know, you've seen it here, right? The growth in two years of what she's been able to accomplish and what she's learned. So she's gonna be sadly missed, um, very much so. I can't talk about it too much because I'll end up crying about it. But um, I always tell her, I have two daughters, right, twenty-four and twenty-five, and she's been like a third to me since I've been here. I came in, same time she came in, so we've been through this together, so. I will miss her, and I'm sure you all will as well. But I did wanna wish her well and at least let you guys know that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nina. Best wishes.
That's it. Now you can vote to adjourn.
All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Mario? Motion to adjourn? Anybody?
Yes, I motion to adjourn.
I don't know if I wanna do that. I'm gonna keep it.
Motion is, I mean, Mario has a motion.
Nina, you have a motion no longer?
I have another meeting to go.
Oh, she need, whatever she go, that, she need that.
All right. Okay, Mike, uh, made a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, good luck, love.
I.
Good luck, formation.